It's about seven o'clock, the meeting's open. When we all stand and do the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we shouldn't have a long meeting, but let's just like go through it. The first item is Guyton Woods, and we're going to be voting on their request to see whether or not this is a substantial or a insubstantial change. I'll read the letter. Could you point to the voting members?
Yeah, I'm gonna go Jason Quinn, um, myself, and I'm gonna do Tim Ryan's.
So on April the 18th, uh, we got, uh, 2018, we received a letter. Dear Mr. Pacheco, as you know, this firm represents Guyton Woods LLC in volatting connection with a subject comprehensive permit from, for which the Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency is project administrator. Reference is made to condition 7D of the comprehensive permit as previously amended by your board by decisions dated January 17th, 2007, and June 20th, 2012. A copy of the most recent decision has been attached here too as exhibit A. Pursuant to 760 CM R31.03 parentheses 3, this letter will serve as a request to change condition 7B as amended for the purpose of increasing the maximum sale price of the remaining affordable units as follows. D, the maximum sale price of the affordable units shall be set at no more than either $2,000, $203,600 or 70% of the current listed area MSA parentheses HUD metropolitan, statistical areas unparentheses, median income, whichever is less. As a reason for this request to change, the applicant states as follows. The applicant now, nonprofit consultant, housing solutions for Southeast Massachusetts Inc., formerly South Shore Housing Developmental Corporation, has determined that the maximum sale price applicable to three bedrooms, affordable units, based on 70% of the current area MSA is $203,600, assuming an interest rate of 4.25, which exceeds the current average available rate of interest for new single-family mortgages. And two, according to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, the cumulative rate of inflation from June 2012 to date of the board's most recent decision to April 2018 was 9.19%. Additionally, according to the construction analytics, long-term construction cost inflation is double the CPI, such that the construction cost inflation applicable to this project is 18.38%, see exhibit B attached. Finally, the applicant requests the board make a determination that the change request is not substantial, persistent with the board's two prior determinations, and allow the change as set forth above. Counting dock this matter for your next scheduled hearing unless a decision has been rendered administratively by the board. Very truly yours, its attorney, Matera, Matera and Johnson, PC. Copy this was given to our attorney. So I, I've made a request, and this is, for those, maybe Greg, you may know Mr. Zola, but everybody else, Jay Zola, produced the petition in this case here. So I've, um... I made a request that we get a pro forma, which is the, which will show us how much money has been used, spent so far, how much money, if there's been a profit, how much the profit is, so that we can determine whether or not there's been a, uh, a need to increase the price of the affordables. So on May 10th, I got from Jay Zola, "Tax, please find a summary of our performance over the last 14 years. These numbers are directly from our tax returns. We feel that this summary is the best way to illustrate where a project 90% complete stands. We believe that we are nowhere near any thresholds which may raise concerns to raise the affordable prices. There remains five market REIT homes expected profit of about $50,000 a piece and the six affordables, which I doubt even with the increase will provide much of any further profit." Hopefully this information satisfies your request. So, uh, my concern when I, when I got that information was that they were supposed to do, build affordable houses in different phases, and the last phase they were supposed to do four affordable houses, while the others were already supposed to be completed. They've, they've got six left, so...
Did you double check what I said?
I've, I've checked the decision.
The modification?
The modification. And with the mod, you know, I did check the modification.
It should say six and six. I'm pretty sure it says six and six. 'Cause I don't think I would've agreed to eight and four.
Well, it wasn't, initially it was three phases.
No, no. Initially it was 52 units with 15 affordables. And then we came back and we got more lots, and we went to 65 lots with 18 affordables.
Minus, and you may be correct.
I think I am.
Okay, that's, that's fine. But I was troubled by that, that you had six left. And if you're correct, then that's not an issue at all. Well, I went through the whole thing, and I saw that the last phase was supposed to be completed. And I did check the modifications, but, uh, I'm not gonna question...
I could be wrong too, but I'm not trying, I'm not digging in on yet.
Yeah, so anyway, there's six affordable left, and the question is whether or not we want to increase, allowing to increase the price of the affordables. I don't think we can do it without the pro forma, which we haven't done today. So today, in my conversations with Jay is, today we're gonna vote whether or not this is a substantial change or not. In the past, let me just for the record, before you guys make, take a vote on this, we voted that it was a minor change. Minor change meaning, he doesn't have to notify the board us, he doesn't have to put it in paper, we'll just have it at our next hearing. We will decide in a public hearing whether or not to, we agree to the increase in affordable houses. Marguerite will be here next time, she's not gonna be here today. But I don't think we can do that without the pro forma. So he's given us some information, he's given us the profits or not, or lack of profits over the past, how many years?
14 years.
14 years. Fred, we want the pro forma, we wanna actually see what, and so we can have maybe... Remember Ed Marchand, we met last week? He may be the person, I'll bring him and take a look at it.
You use Ed?
We may use Ed.
That'll probably help me, I know Ed. I don't mean in a bad way, but he can help. My biggest fear is figuring out how to put it, how to create a pro forma for something with like 90% done. 'Cause I'm, what you're gonna end up getting, truthfully, is you're gonna get, I'm gonna... Because the pro forma, it fits into a different, there's different numbers that are different, that are differently, differently categorized than we categorize them, say, on an income statement. So stuff like, like if I'm not mistaken, I'm entitled to 2% overhead. Well, I don't have a 2% overhead on my income statement because of my, I don't expense that 2%, it's a, it's a fictitious sort of number that they allow me, one way or another, and we just take it through, through general expense. I will, I'll figure it out. I'll get you something that you can use.
Because now 90% of it's done, so you have, you should have more accurate figures, right?
No, this, these are the accurate figures. These are, these are right from my tax returns. So every year my accountant would look at my, look at my income, he'd look at my expenses, and he'd give me a number, and that's what my...
I think you have a copy of his...
Yeah, the only, the only thing that would vary, truthfully, if you remember how a pro forma works, you know how they handle the land? So, but my, I never paid my people much money on the land. 'Cause they, whatever, I'll deal, we'll deal with it.
Did we all get a copy of this?
It's right there, I think.
I'll look that.
May I?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, on the back page, let me look at the back page.
Yeah, so if you look, that's why, that's the year, and my, that's my tax, lost, gained.
I did one of these, and I didn't do that. Not that I'm questioning him, but this is...
It's for next week.
Yeah, but this is figures that he's given us, and we're not looking at the tax returns. I know it's not a big thing that people give the tax returns to the board, but you don't have to look at them, but...
I'd rather give you the tax returns.
Uh, but you'll be able to come up with something.
I'll get you something.
And please give it to us in ample time, so perhaps, uh, somewhere...
You and I will communicate, we'll communicate. Starting next week, we'll communicate, and I'll get it done in the next couple of weeks.
So, Tim, do you have any questions for Jay before we take a vote on whether or not this is a substantial change or not?
No, I don't, 'cause I, well, I should say this, I'm sure that the numbers that you've provided in regards to your taxes in a pro forma are gonna be changed a little bit, I'm sure.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a formatting thing, I'll figure it out. Don't worry about it.
Jason, you have any questions?
I do not, I mean, I guess the only question may be pro forma being sort of like a schedule values for each house that we have.
No, pro forma is a general pro forma on, it's the, it's the template that Mass Housing puts out, basically, for you to fill in the blanks when I'm in here before I start. So before I start the project, I have to come in here, and I have to show you what my expected profit, what my, I have to show you on a pro forma that I'm not, that I'm not gonna make too much money, and, just as important, that I'm gonna make enough money to make the job successful. So that's sort of the point of the pro forma, to, and to fit within the blocks of, of, uh... And, and, and I'm entitled to 20% profit, my set, my, my costs are gonna be, let's say, well, I can tell you, my costs are gonna be $13 million, no more, $15 million. I was entitled to make $3 million on this project. I have to start paying the town if I make a million and a half, I think it works. And I'm, and I'm scratching the break even. If I can break even getting out of here, I'm doing somersaults going down, going down 138. So that's where we're at.
Okay. It's just that it's a serious thing to increase the price of the affordable.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And one other point with regard to that, I'm just asking what you're giving everybody else? All the other have, the, I, all the other, they're all at 203. So I'm the only one that, I mean, I think if I'm not mistaken, I'm the only project that you limited for some reason, the, the amount.
Okay, yeah, Greg, do you have any questions?
Well, what was your original affordable housing pricing that was? It was $179?
No, it was what, the original was, so, so the way it went was, the original one was $149.
And that was back in 2004?
Right, and then before we started, you guys raised the water price in town from, from something to something, 5,200...
When it says "you guys" doesn't mean it's...
The town, the town didn't raise the water. So we came back day one, before we even started, if you look, it looks like we came back, I don't know, number one, footnote one, it was 2007. So that was before we even built the house. And we whined, and we said, "Hey, we have a pro forma."
And we're not gonna be...
That you've taken $75,000 or something from us before we even started. So the solution to that problem was raising the affordables.
Just the affordables or...?
Yeah, we raised the affordables from $149 to $163.
Yeah, we had no control over the market houses. So that's another reason why we wanna look at the pro forma. So you watch the prices that have been brought up.
So the first $12,000 is really a reimbursement for water expense paid to the town of Dyke. So our effective rate right now is 175 less that 12. Our effective affordable price to us is 163 right now. If that makes any sense.
Yep. So next time he comes in for the meeting, we're gonna ask that you have a pro forma.
Yep.
At that point, Marguerite can review it, and then at the bank, we can table this and vote from there.
And right now we're just voting one for some minor change.
Right, so, but we may, if we get the pro forma in soon enough, and we have somebody able to look at it and give us an analysis of it, we may be able to vote at the next meeting.
Right, I'm just, so, I am, I have the lottery like Greg. One of the reasons I have all of them here is we wanted to do one lottery. We think the market's strong enough now that we can, that we can run a lottery and get rid of them all at once. In order to do that, all the houses sort of have to be built. You can't like have six empty lots, do a lottery, get six people, and then expect that those same six people are gonna be there a year later, still qualifying, 'cause it's hard to qualify. You get a colo and screws you up, you get a raise screws you up. So we, we really had to group them together so that we could do a, do one lottery and get out, rather than having to do a lottery and then resell everything four times down the line. So that's where our head was at as far as...
No, I understand. But it's, it's difficult then, if you're part of the lottery, then they're not gonna get to pick the type of house, basically, I mean...
They never get to pick, you...
I thought they were able to go in there and say, "Look, this is of the five style, whatever the styles you have," and say, "I told you this."
Well, yeah, no, but...
There's so many...
But we try to mix up the houses, so if one, if there was one, let's say we had a 4,200 square foot colonial of one house, and three 1,500 square foot houses as the other one, everyone's gonna say, "Oh, I want the 4,200 one." But what we end up with are, are, all the affordables are 4,200 feet. That means when you drive through the site, that big house, that's an affordable. That big, and you don't want that. So they, they, you, it doesn't, no, you...
Well, as long as they're gonna get a decent house.
And all, all our houses are the same. They're all three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, one car garage, roughly between 14, 15, and 1,500 and 50 square feet. So we give a pretty good house for the value. We do the two-and-a-half baths at all the houses, we don't, you know, give them one-and-a-half baths and stuff like that.
Now, I'm familiar with the lottery process. We have to wait 30 days with Mass Housing before we do the lottery, before we rent out the condos or the apartments, so...
Oh, that's all a question, man.
Does somebody wanna make, make a motion?
Would it be proper, Mr. Chairman, to make a motion that Mr. Jay Zola return at our next meeting with a pro, a proper pro forma?
That's fine.
Which is June 20th, yep. Is there a second on that motion?
I second that.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no opposed, ayes have it. And we need a second motion now, whether this is a substantial or minor change.
Chairman, I'd make a motion that this is a minor change.
So I'll second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no opposed. Okay, so you, you know you're gonna get that pro forma, you communicate with me.
Can I also go back to about my little road bond release question to put on the, put on the agenda for next week that we can discuss?
Yes.
Releasing my money when I do the work.
You can put that on the agenda also, that...
Discussion of road bond, discussion of surety.
So are we gonna, should we get another cost to complete then, from...
Do you win? I don't think that's real, I don't think that's really pertinent to the question, to be honest with you. We could do that afterwards, but right now, if you're not gonna release anything, then there's no reason to pay him...
You're not asking for a specific...
I'm not asking for anything, I'm just asking...
You're just gonna see if, whether or not we're gonna release money.
Yeah, if you release money when I do the work, you can do what you want after that.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, everybody, the second item is the review, discussing act on the anti-harassment policy. Everybody has an envelope there with the... Have not signed mine yet.
I've, though, I'm gonna return it to the top question.
All right, okay, yep, so, uh, you know that, then he's already...
And I will return this just in case someone else will need it for future reference.
So I need that Zach in the... Okay, the Cannabis Policy Task Force member and... For those of you who don't know, that Tim and I are both on the Cannabis Task Force, and we got a meeting coming up next week. But this is a letter from, a member and a from them. To the Planning Board, zoning board of appeals, and board of selectmen from Cannabis Policy Task Force regarding marijuana policy, date April 16th, 2018. At the March 22nd, 2018, regular meeting of the Cannabis Policy Task Force, we discussed possible directions for the town of Dyke regarding medical and adult-use marijuana policy. There were three clear directions the town could take: banning adult-use marijuana, permitting adult-use marijuana, or limiting adult-use marijuana permits to 20% of alcohol licenses currently permitted in town. The task force voted unanimously to allow local permitting for adult-use marijuana, but to regulate it via a local tax of 3%, as well as amend the local zoning bylaws specific to adult-use marijuana to be drafted by the planning board or placed in the warrant for the upcoming annual town meeting. The task force unanimously agreed not to institute a moratorium on adult-use marijuana. The task force acknowledged that the board had helped with the local permitting authority, and that the planning board will be responsible for the site plan review and any required special permits. Task force will be reviewing the local permit map regulations presented by the board. So, just for clarification, Tim, I believe that it's not the board of health, it's the planning board that's gonna be the granting authority. Was that, they changed that, is that part of the, the bylaws gonna be presented to the town?
I think they might've put vault in, it was something to check into, but it may have been just strictly the planning board.
Yeah, I know that we talked about it at a meeting, that the, maybe the board of health, and then for some reason I think it might've changed after that. So anyway, it's gonna be on the warrant, and we'll get the vote on that at the end of the town meeting. Okay, the next item is the Chappa May 4th conference. Tim Ryan's, myself, as well as Nicole Skalison attended this meeting, and you've got some information, I've asked, you've got in your packages there some information that we, we got from that. We both, three of us attended one of the classes, and two of us attended the St. Papa class, and you attended, what was the one you attended?
The, um, the second, in the packet there. I forgot the title of it, but the, the first one...
Make local action count.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, do you want me to speak on?
Yes, if you did speak on, do you...
So the packets that you have are, the cover sheet is just basic information about the conference that we attended. The second part is the packet that I received from Ed Marchand, specifically going through the ins and outs of 40B development in towns. It was, it was pretty much a wealth of information, so I wanted to include it for everyone to reference. And then the next documents are my notes on, on panel two and three, and the following, the end packet is a slide deck that Ken provided, Mr. Chairman provided. So the second panel was pretty much going through how towns are dealing with affordable housing without building 40B construction. A lot of focus on multi-use buildings. It was mostly urban areas, they were building housing as well as department stores and mixed use out of it, so they weren't doing large projects like 40Bs. The second panel that I attended with Ken and Tim was focused on community outreach and developing a master plan with the community's involvement. They went through how they utilize data and incorporated the community in the decision-making process. I thought it was a very helpful conference, it was a lot of information.
And Tim and I attended the St. Papa, which was at, during the morning, and you can answer whatever, I'm gonna say. They presented a PowerPoint presentation, you have that in front of you. They also, one of the people who spoke was a select person from Amherst, and she went through the different 40Bs that they've had in town, how they've been able to deal with 40Bs coming in. So they were a very proactive town. But they gave briefly, they gave three reasons how a town, you know, as EBA can refuse to hear of 40Bs. If you get 10% of affordable housing, we're not at 10%.
What do we have to, you know?
5.7% right now. But that's gonna change when they do the census in 2020, I'm sure it's gonna go down.
So we're never gonna meet that.
We're never, we would if Somerset Woods filed through, but that's, we all know the story there. And I think we're gonna have, shortly, we're gonna have a 40B coming in at Somerset Woods. So we're gonna, we're gonna be dealing with that. So 65 communities do have that 10%, we're not one of them. Another one is if the general land area minimum, 1.5% of the total land area is affordable, there is no town or city that has that in the state. There are four that have applied for it recently. They haven't been denied yet, but they suspect they're gonna be denied. And the other thing is if on an annual, every year you have a 0.03% or 10 acres a year converted over to affordable housing, to lower moderate housing, we don't have that, and there's no town or city that does that. So we're not really, that's not a realistic thing for us to have happen. But like I said, we do have a 40B that's probably gonna become a name, and I just request that Greg not be on that 40B, because Greg was in, on Somerset Woods, and it was really a very...
A long one.
Yes, you're the last surviving member of that, 'cause Bob wasn't, and I was Joe Pacheco and Peter Karen, I think, and you, correct. So out of fairness to Greg, it's gonna be other people that are gonna be of, whatever that call is. Any questions about the, the conference? We're gonna have more conferences coming in, everybody will be invited, I know some...
They all work days though?
Excuse me?
None of them are on weekends or nothing, that you know of?
No, you had one, you, you went to one on St. Patrick's Day.
On St. Patty's Day.
Oh geez, I, I missed that one. Uh, but she, she went on St. Patrick's Day, good for her.
If I get enough notice on the weekdays, I can arrange schedules to, to attend it, if he has need to.
Yeah, we had a, right after this one, there was a 40-hour on May 10th, and we did, we did not go to it, but it was too quick after this one, this one, yeah. So we, we chose not to, but as Nicole gets it, she'll send it out to everybody. There is, the town does provide money for that training, so I just, I just think it's helpful, especially with the way we've been getting 40Bs and that's probably...
Chairman, if I may, I'd just like to comment, as attending the conference, the woman from Springfield who spoke mentioned that they've gone to the community preservation fund in order to do some of this housing. And it, you know, taxed that fund itself by utilizing those funds, but it has been a, a win-win for that area in Springfield, the way they've done it, so...
Good.
And the bigger communities, Boston, Springfield, stuff like that, it's easier for them to have 10%.
They need a lot of that coal and stuff, yeah.
Russ here is...
We're never gonna meet that.
Always playing catch-up.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's just chasing their tails.
Yeah, I don't think we've got enough land to meet that.
Not anymore.
Not doing roads.
Yeah. So on the old business, case number 171723, do you have any questions regarding that, or...
No, I just, I, I don't, I, I have to say, I generally take exception to the government using the term affordable housing. I don't really think it's the government's business to determine of what, of whether housing is affordable or not. And, but unfortunately, it has become part of our language, and, and somehow or another, we've been dragged down the path of somehow or another, planning to it under the, under this 40B housing, which means that only some small percentage of that project is for, is quote, under some mystical title of affordable housing. But that's just a comment, not an, in an attempt to open an argument with the, with the board. But, and I only offer that because you solicited some input.
Sure.
But other than that, no, I have any further comments at this time. Thank you for asking.
Yeah, just, just for the record, either in 2010, 2012, we got, as citizens, got to vote on affordable housing again, on 40Bs again, and it was, it was passed again by the citizens. It is, and I won't get into debate about what's affordable, frankly. So on the old business, 17 dash 172396, this is Pleasant Street, this is something that we voted on at the last meeting. Those voting members were Cam Pacheco, Robert Adams, and Jason Quinn. That is not completed yet, the decision has not been written. So what our attorney wants us to do is to make a motion, it doesn't have to be these three voting members, but we can do it as a board, make a motion that when this decision is ready, that we can come in individually and sign it, rather than wait till June 20th. So have it done before June 20th, but we wanna be able to, these voting members come in and sign off on what's the decisions right now. So can somebody make that motion that we sign this 17172396 Pleasant Street decision when it comes in individually, and not wait till June 20th?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that when the decision on case number 17 dash 172396 Pleasant Street, and the decision is ready, to have these members who need to sign come in individually and not as a group.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second to that motion.
Any further discussion on that? No discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no opposed. Has everybody had an opportunity to read the April 18th minutes? You know, I know it, it just come out tonight.
Yes, sorry about that.
So if you haven't read it, then we don't have to vote on it tonight, but...
I have, I do even.
I've read it.
I've read it this morning.
Were you able to read it?
I was not present, so I really couldn't, I couldn't sign on that.
Yeah, okay. So, 'cause...
I'm making a motion to table the approval of the minutes of the April 18th, 2018 meeting.
We're not gonna table it then, because he wasn't here at that meeting.
He wasn't.
I wasn't here, so he doesn't... Yeah, I wasn't here, so I...
Privy of that, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, so you make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'm making a motion to approve the minutes of the April 18th, 2018 meeting.
Is there a second?
Second to that.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, say aye.